I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands our nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
The Town of Burlington will be holding the June 2nd, 2022 meeting of the Planning Board as a hybrid meeting due to the current state of emergency due to the COVID-19 virus. As such, the Governor issued an executive order on March 12th, 2020 authorizing remote meetings under Georgia Law Code 30A, Section 20. Those seeking to participate remotely may do so via the following: you can go to townofburlingtonwebex.com. Our meeting number is (234) 95901461. The meeting password is 1645, and you can call, you can also join by phone at (617) 315-0704. The meeting is being broadcast on the BCAT Government Channel, Comcast 99, RCN 15, and Verizon Channel 41. It's also being streamed on Facebook Live at the BCAT Government Facebook page. The public will be able to make comments during the hearing, during the time for public comment. Questions can be asked via WebEx and the WebEx Q&amp;A function. All persons wishing to ask a question or make a comment must identify themselves.
We have some items continued off the agenda this evening. May I have a motion, please?
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to take item 8A out of order for discussion purposes.
All this in favor? Opposed? Item A is a public hearing, application for approval of a special permit pursuant to Section 4.2.6.9, fast order food establishments of the zoning bylaws. Three Old Concord Road Armored Construction Design LLC is the applicant.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to continue this item to the Planning Board meeting of June 16th, 2022.
All this in favor? Opposed?
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to take item 8I out of order for discussion purposes.
All this in favor? Opposed? Item I is a discussion topic of the signed district map zoning bylaw review committee is the applicant.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to continue this item to the Planning Board meeting of July 21st, 2022.
All this in favor? Opposed?
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to take items 8J through 8P out of order and together for discussion purposes.
All this in favor? Opposed? Okay, moving on. Item J is a continued public hearing, application for approval of a special permit pursuant to Section 4.2.7.1, light manufacturing or processing plants, prototype manufacturing, the zoning bylaws, 22 Terry Ave., AP Terry LLC is the applicant.
Item B, if you want to just read the special permit sections after you've read that first one, feel free. So just read. So you read the first one, Section 4271, and then Section 42711, research and development of the zoning bylaws. 4274, laboratories engaged in research, experimental testing. Section 4274, Life Science Laboratory is engaged in research, prototype manufacture, experimental and testing activities. Section 42742, Life Science Laboratory is engaged in manufacture of life science technologies and medicines for commercial production. Section 4279, hazardous toxic materials used in storage. And finally, the continued public hearing, application for approval of special permit pursuant to Section 42711, hazardous and toxic materials, chemical use, storage, transport, disposal, or discharge of the zoning bylaw, all for 22 Terry Avenue, AP Terry LLC.
Do I need to say that now that you just did? I appreciate that.
I'd like to make a motion to continue these items to the Planning Board meeting of June 16th, 2022, as requested by the applicant's attorney in an email dated May 31st, 2022.
All this in favor? Opposed? Okay. So you can table number two. I think we should table two until everyone is here. Let's move on to Citizens Time. Do you need a motion, just a motion to table?
Madam Chair, I'd make a motion to table item two.
Second. All this in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Also, I would like to take a moment to welcome our new member, Tony Anatola, to the Planning Board.
Welcome.
I feel kind of guilty because we really have a short agenda tonight, and you're really not getting a good table of what you're in store for.
Gee, this is easy.
Yeah. Everyone would want to be on the Planning Board then, right? So moving on to Citizens Time, is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on an item that's not on our current agenda? If so, would you please raise your hand and identify yourself?
I don't see anybody on WebEx other than BCAT, but I think they needed us to do something. So we just turned the camera on.
Oh, cool. Thanks. All right, let's move on to announcements, please.
So, on to announcements, the ZBRC signage subcommittee will have a meeting on June 6th at 5:30 via Zoom. The Burlington Housing Partnership will also have a meeting on June 7th at 5:00 PM on WebEx. The Sculpture Park Committee will have a meeting on June 14th at 4:00 PM via WebEx. And just a reminder, the Celtics are in their first game of the finals tonight, so just go Celts.
Is why I was surprised to see Mr. Buckley get double-timed tonight.
Christine was the sheen.
Okay, so does anyone on the board have any other announcements that they'd like to make? Okay. May I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to take items B through 8H together for discussion purposes.
Second. All this in favor? Opposed?
Item B is a public hearing, application for approval of a special permit pursuant to Section 6.1.2.1, nonconforming structures and premises of the zoning bylaws. One Burlington Mall Road Pyramid, Pyramid Burlington Management LLC on behalf of RV Hotel Burlington LLC is the applicant. Item C is a public hearing, application for approval of the site plan, One Burlington Mall Road Pyramid Burlington Management LLC on behalf of RV Hotel Burlington LLC is the applicant. Item D is a public hearing, application for approval of a special permit pursuant to Section 4.2.7.4.2, Life Science Laboratories engaged in the manufacture of life science technologies and medicines for commercial production to the market, including but not limited to the fields of pharmaceuticals, biomedical technologies, and engineering. Life Systems Technologies, Environmental Biomedical Devices, Bio Safety Level 4 BL4 Laboratories is defined at the Center for Disease Control and Prevention or prohibited in Burlington of the zoning bylaws, One Burlington Mall Road Lincoln Property Company is the applicant. Item E is a public hearing, application for approval of a special permit pursuant to Section 4.2.7.9, hazardous and toxic materials, chemical use, storage, transport, disposal, or discharge of the zoning bylaws. One Burlington Mall Road Lincoln Property Company is the applicant. Item F is a public hearing, application for approval of a special permit pursuant to Section 4.2.7.12, generation or storage of hazardous waste in excess of the volumes classified as a very small quantity generator of the zoning bylaws, One Burlington Mall Road Lincoln Property Company is the applicant. Item G is a public hearing, application for approval of a special permit pursuant to Section 4.3.2.15, storage and disposal of oils and fuels, petroleum products of the zoning bylaws, One Burlington Mall Road Lincoln Property Company is the applicant. Item H is a public hearing, application for approval of a site plan, One Burlington Mall Road Lincoln Property Group is the applicant. Good evening, folks.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. I'd like to echo, welcome, Tony. You'll learn to treasure these short meetings, so we're going to make it as brief as we can. And to that, I won't do the introduction of the whole team. I have Christine Hung from my office down there in case I have to leave. If it goes that long, we're all in trouble. But as you will recall, just to set the stage, the last time I was here, we approved an A&R Plan to spin off the lower parking lot at the Burlington Marriott Site. Our intent is to develop the lower parcel as a life science building, which will be developed by Lincoln Property Group. And I have this with me this evening, Paul Alphern from Alphern and Santos, who's representing Lincoln, who will give an overview of their project. I like the record just to reflect the fact that this is a collaborative effort. The hotel is very excited about the opportunity to do this because they view this as creating a cluster or enhancing the cluster that already exists, which is very valuable to the long-term economic vitality of the hotel. As we all know, we've been some interesting times and things have changed. Burlington is very lucky because they've developed, had the foresight a number of years ago to embark on positioning the town to take advantage of the emerging exodus out of the inner core with the life science industry, and is very well positioned. We would like to capitalize that on that end and make the hotel the center of that cluster over there where it's been for 40 years? Forty years. So we're going to be brief tonight. We're going to give an overview of what we're proposing. I know there were questions. I've spoken to staff. This is a world-class project. It's a world-class developer, and it is a very exciting, from my standpoint, intellectual challenge to do all the zoning and putting the pieces together. So I'm excited about it. I hope the board is. And with that, I'm going to be quiet. So I'm going to introduce Paul, who will take the board and the audience through who Lincoln is and why Burlington should be excited to have them here. Thank you, Paul.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm Paul Alphern. Lincoln Property Company came to Burlington not just because you have an innovation district, but because the Town of Burlington has a reputation, as you well know, of being able to appreciate the needs of business and addressing the needs. And we appreciate not only the reasonable and well-thought-out regulations you have, but also your staff people who have been very helpful in guiding us through the process. As Bob said, having two properties involved in one application process isn't the easiest thing in the world to do, but they've been very helpful in providing us the guidance. Lincoln Property Company does not have any particular tenants or users of the building. They don't know at this time if they'll have one tenant or multiple tenants, but because of their extensive experience in this area, they're very confident that they will have one or more life science tenant in the building. And to that end, we've applied for all of the special permits that we anticipate would be required by any tenant, the goal being that having the permits in hand will attract the highest-quality tenant to the property, knowing that they'll be ready to go, and just having to follow up with the necessary requirements once they identify the various materials that will be used in their particular facility. You'll also find that the Lincoln Property portion of the site was designed to comply with the zoning bylaw. There's no variances required. We fit the property into the dimensional requirements of the zoning bylaw, not necessarily the easiest thing in the world to do, partly because we're at height restrictions based upon our proximity to the residential district, and there's a height restriction associated with the center of the intersection of Route 128 and Cambridge Street. Jim Noonan of Lincoln Property Company is here to introduce the Lincoln Property Company so you know who they are, and then Mark Wickstead is going to go through the site plan so you get a feel for the nuts and bolts of the project.
Thank you. Take your time.
So thank you all for seeing us this evening. I'm just going to be really brief, give a background on Lincoln Property Company so you know who we are and how the experience that we have will fit nicely here. So Lincoln Property, we're a national company. We have about 8,500 employees nationwide. We have our local office is downtown Boston. We have about 430 million square feet under leasing or management. We're a full-service real estate company. We have property management, we have brokerage and leasing, project management, portfolio management, development, and acquisitions. We also have experience in Burlington. We've managed on Vandegrift. Right now, we have a couple of properties under management at One and Three Burlington Woods, so neighbors to where we are here. We're currently developing a lab building in Waltham, so we've got the lab experience. We just finished one in Boxborough. And like Paul said, we like the innovation district. We were attracted to Burlington for that reason, and very selfishly attracted to Burlington because I live in Burlington.
Even better.
It's nice to do that. We have a great deal of experience in life sciences, and when we get into the slides, Chris Wesson from our office will be speaking to the life science experience. So thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. As he said, my name is Chris Wesson, Vice President of Life Sciences Management for the Boston region. And I'll just briefly go over a couple of highlights here on these slides. But as Jim mentioned, we've been in the Boston area for quite some time, and in laboratories in the greater Boston area for just about 20 years. We have decades of experience on our team, and a large team, which you'll see here as well, managing these sorts of assets, navigating them for our clients, and also working with different municipalities around the region to ensure that these facilities are successful, not only for the tenants, but also for the communities in which they reside as well. Mark, if you don't mind, just bumping over one slide there. Talking a little bit about, I think Jim touched on this, we offer a whole host of different services as part of the life sciences platform. That includes everything from client advisory on design and construction, all the way through onboarding of tenants and tenant construction, and then finally, management of the final product, and managing those facilities in compliance with local folks as well. So as you can see here, we've got a couple developments downtown Boston, Parcel H being most notable center of this slide right here, which is certainly a large one. But we have a couple others that I wanted to highlight briefly. Mark, if you don't mind, just bumping over a couple of slides here. There we go. So you can see our greater Boston footprint here, 4 million square feet of life sciences product under management today of about 20 million square feet that Lincoln manages as a whole. So certainly, we've got a depth of experience here, and on this map, you can kind of get an idea of where those different projects are located, not only in downtown Boston, but also in the 128 corridor and out in the western and northwestern suburbs as well. And lastly, I did want to just hit on click the folks we have on our team. Sorry, back one. There we go. So as you can see here, you know, this is, we've got a deep bench, we just want to show here that, you know, we have 40 full-time professionals dedicated to life sciences in the greater Boston area. It's our fastest-growing team, as you might expect, given the climate that we're all experiencing in the industry. But we've got folks who are experienced inside of the industry, coming from pharmaceutical companies and the like, who run our operations team, and also career property management folks, such as Scott Brown, Wendy Pierce, and myself, leading the group as well. So with that, I will turn it over to Mark in the interest of brevity. Mark?
Thank you. Thank you. I'm Mark Wickstead with Bowler. I'm going to talk about the overall site, the lab area of the site, and the improvements that'll be made to the Marriott site as well. And then we'll get into architecture after I go over all of the site plans. So I think you guys probably know where the site is. It's the corner of Cambridge Street and Burlington Mall Road. We've highlighted the area that was subdivided off. As you know, at the last hearing, the lab would be going here, and the Marriott is right here. We'll get in a little closer here. So again, in red is the 4.4-acre lab lot. We've got the lab building in blue and the GMP portion of the building in orange here. We think it fits in pretty nicely with the site. This is today a satellite parking lot that's really not used for the hotel's daily functions. And we are staying completely within the existing curb line of that lot, which you think is great because we're not going to disturb things, any of the vegetation around there. And then the Marriott, we're going to do some improvements at the entry, and we're going to make some pedestrian improvements down to Burlington Woods Drive. So we'll get into that in a little more detail, but this kind of shows the whole area pretty well. Again, talking a little bit about pedestrian connections and transportation, we worked to try and improve things for future employees and hotel patrons and guests. So we have, in yellow here is kind of the pedestrian paths we see. There are bus stops both at the Marriott driveway today and across on Cambridge Street over here. As part of the lab development, we're going to make a connection that doesn't exist today from that area down to Mall Road, so someone could get to that bus stop much easier, or get to Mall Road much easier. The other major improvement would be a sidewalk connection through the Marriott parking lot to Burlington Woods Drive, which doesn't exist today. So we feel like people will be able to navigate the site on foot very easily when this is complete. So I'm going to go through the site plans now. I'm going to start with the lab plan, but you've got two packets for this. I know it's a little cumbersome probably, but I'm going to go through the lab one first, just selected sheets to be quick, and then I'll go through some of the hotel sheets as well. So cover sheet, you guys are used to that. So this is the overall site plan. This focuses on the lab building here. Again, the blue line is the subdivision line. Access to the lab site would be very similar to the way you would get to that satellite parking lot today. You'd enter off of Mall Road, drive past the entry to the hotel, and then enter the parking lot there. I'll talk about some changes we're going to make to the hotel entry to make that a little more easy to see the two uses, and some pedestrian improvements around the entry. So here's a zoomed-up view of the lab. Again, the lab portion of the building is the taller building that sits here, and then the GMP portion of the building is to the south here. Parking circles the site. Again, we're within the existing parking lot that's there today, so this is a site where if you were to go look at it, you could very easily see what the perimeter of the site would look like, because we're really not making that many significant changes out there. We're keeping the grades very similar. If you did go out there today, you'd see a large bedrock outcropping in the middle of the two parking lots, which we would be taking down to build this. Some other things around the building, you know, some handicap parking here. We've got some utilities over here, generator. We have some space for air gas. There'd likely be some sort of tanks outside of the building for nitrogen and other types of gases used in the lab facility. We've got a loading area here, and that's about it. It's a pretty simple layout. Circulation works for fire trucks and delivery trucks around the building pretty well. This may be a little hard to see, but it's a grading and drainage plan. Again, grades around the building are pretty similar to what they are today. It's relatively flat around the building. What we're going to do over here is pull back the parking lot. I don't know if you can see that very well, but pull back the parking lot and put in a bio-retention area, because one of the goals we'd like to do here is improve the stormwater handling of the site. Today, the site has just deep-sump catch basins, and that's it. So we want to improve the water quality out there. So we're going to have some water quality units, some infiltration, and then this bio-retention area, which is, you know, a low-impact development feature, which is really encouraged today by the DEP and the CONCOM and others in the industry. So everything still flows to the same spot. There is a wetland to the south here, which was originally a detention basin when the hotel was built, but since then, it's become a wetland, even though it was designed as a detention basin. Utilities, and I don't want to spend too much time on this, but most of the utilities come in on the east side of the building. There are some existing utilities that go through the parking lot today, so we're able to connect into those fairly easily. And then there's a landscaping plan. Again, we're going to be landscaping around the building, I'd say more than what's there today. There's a lot of rock there today, so hopefully, we'll be able to do a little better there. I should say also that with all the landscaping we're adding, we're actually decreasing the impervious area by 9,000 square feet. So we're automatically reducing runoff and encouraging more infiltration just with the layout and site design. This is a lighting plan. I think we're in compliance with all the lighting standards, but I'm not going to zoom in on that one. So here's the hotel package. If you're looking at it, they do have different cover sheets. Again, this plan is very similar. We tried to make the overall site plan the same in each set so that you could compare and look at the overall site easily. This plan shows kind of the improvements around the hotel. So today, under the entry of the hotel, the portico chair, there are pavers, so we thought it would be good to just extend those out in both directions towards the site driveway, which is bituminous, so that there would be a clear distinction between what's the hotel entry and what is the driveway to continue on to the hotel. The other thing, which I mentioned before, is a sidewalk that would run along the west side of the hotel, and then a crosswalk across Burlington Woods Drive with handicap ramps as well. We're also adding a handicap ramp in front of the conference center of the hotel, which there isn't one there today. This is the grading plan. I'm not going to spend any time on that, really. And then I think we could probably start talking about architecture.
Thank you, Mark.
I'm Michael Liu. I'm Senior Partner at the Architectural Team, which is the name of our company. The building is in this aerial rendering, you can see. We patched the rendering of the building into some aerial photographs that we took a few weeks ago. So you can see how dense the existing foliage is around the site that, as Mark said, we will not be removing. And you can see that, this is the side, the east elevation where the service entrance are, which you can see from this view, from a pedestrian-level view, from Cambridge Street, you really would not be able to see the first floor. For that matter, I don't think you'd be able to see the second floor either. Could you go to the next slide? But then, when we swing around to the other side, you can get a sense of some of the things we're trying to accomplish from an urban design point of view, because the building, together with the hotel, they make a kind of a campus. And in a way, it completes the three buildings together, start to define the space between them. So they contribute to each other as a kind of urban design massing. And that then relates to some of the circulation and connectivity issues that Mark was describing before, where you get along the front of those buildings, past the proposed building, all the way down to Burlington Mall Road. You can also get a little bit of a sense here of the building mass, and we're going to look in a little more closely, but you can get a sense that there is a kind of a vertical glass piece, which is the kind of marker of the entrance to the building. So when you're in the parking lot or at the hotel, you get a sense of where you need to go if you want to enter the lab and GMP building. Could you go to the next one?
Hold on, I was trying to zoom.
Go to see if it's...
No, it's the next slide.
Sorry, it's just hard to see.
So now we're swinging around, of course, and we're looking at the north elevation, and you can see that the treatment of that facade is a little different, but you can also see that the density of the trees along Burlington Mall Road is a little thinner. So you get some filtered views of the building that you would not have on Cambridge Street. And here, the facade is treated differently. You have a glass facade, a curtain wall facade, which, when we zoom in a little later, in some later slides, we'll see, are meant to express the use of the building. So when you're driving by the building, you'll get a sense that this is a, you know, this is a state-of-the-art, you know, first-class science building, essentially.
A quick question. Because I'm curious as to what the difference in elevation is from 3A to the ground level of the proposed building.
I could probably look that up on the survey if you'd like.
Because it's a pretty...
I'd have to get out of this.
It's steep, right?
Probably about 15 feet lower from 3A to the...
I was thinking 15, 20 feet.
Yeah, about that. I mean, just from walking around, but I can look it up for you in a minute.
And there's a change of grade between the parking lot and that side also, you see it go down.
So the parking lot of the Marriott...
Is higher.
Yeah, it goes down to where... Yeah, it goes down to where the building will sit, and then from that point, the grade goes down to 3A.
Right.
Yeah, the wooded area around this site is probably 15, 20 feet down.
Yeah, that's kind of what I was thinking. So you're looking at 90 feet and then 15 or 20 from 3A?
I could just go back to the plan if you want.
Yeah, it's fine. Just curiosity more at this point. I know we'll be digging in more into that, but.
Sure. Let's advance this slide, yeah.
There'll be a slide later on that will show an outline, so we'll get to that.
Okay, great, thanks.
So here you see from the intersection, you can see there's two facades together. So you see there's a kind of a different treatment from one side to the other, which is intentional. And you can just start to get a glimpse of the ground plane on that service side on the east elevation. And then if you go to the next slide, and here you get a better idea of how the two facades are treated differently because the scale of the intersection is a much bigger scale. You've seen it some farther away, and so it's kind of a bigger facade, and also it's a facade that is intended to express the use of the building when you're in the intersection, whereas the scale of the side that's facing the kind of campus, if you will, is broken up into pieces. So the building is really, you know, there's a lab portion and there's a GMP portion, and so there are interlocking masses which are tied together with this roof screen, which is a kind of a third mass that screens the mechanical equipment that would serve both of them. And the materiality is such that we're thinking that the facade would be composed of colored and textured precast concrete or the curtain wall.
What side do you plan on putting signage?
I beg your pardon?
You're going to be putting signage on the building, correct?
Yeah, we haven't really determined exactly how that would be handled. I mean, it could be handled, it could be integrated with the building itself, for example, in the screen in a way that's sort of subtle and interesting and contributes to the architecture, but we haven't really talked that through with Lincoln yet.
I just want to make sure I'm understanding you. So the section that's above the windows, that's a little bit back, that's not usable space? That is actually just screening the equipment on the roof?
Yeah, so the lab building of this kind has a fair amount of mechanical equipment. So rather than expose it, we have a screen, but we try to make this, treat the screen as a piece of architecture that is part of the ensemble of the masses. Go to the next slide.
So is it, is it solid or is it?
That's a good question. So it can be solid, but we'd like to make it sort of perforated so it's a little bit translucent because it makes it kind of more interesting because you get a kind of a silhouette of what's going on behind.
It might be as heavy-looking as well if it's.
Well, when you have this sort of perforated screens, they tend to feel lighter because when you look through them, you can see light through it.
Right. Thank you.
But we'd like to get a texture on it, and as to your point, I think what I'd like to see is we can incorporate some of the signage into it in a subtle way. Makes it more interesting. I'm sorry?
I like subtle.
Yeah, yeah. Go to the next slide. And then when, this is the entrance of the building, so that you, I mentioned that kind of vertical, the glass piece, which was kind of a marker from the, when you're in the parking lot and from the hotel. And that is where you enter the lab, but you can also see there's an entrance to the right, which is where you enter the GMP building. Together, they're in a kind of a gathering space. They form a kind of, you know, little plaza, which could be used as an amenity for the folks who are working there. And then, which is sort of on the, you know, on the path that goes, connects the hotel back to Burlington Mall Road. And we have a number of slides that follow, which I'll just go through quickly. Some of them are context slides of a survey. We did a survey of existing buildings in the area, as well as just some shots of the existing site with the outline of the building, so you could sort of get a sense of its scale relative to the existing foliage. So here you see in red, the sort of outline of the building, you get a filtered view of the building with the hotel on the right. Again, here again, this is before the trees were really leafed out, and you can just see how dense that is from Cambridge Street.
Chair, because I think Joe, that goes to your issue. What would you see in a grade change? That gives you a perspective of.
Yeah, I think this shows it best. You're looking up that hill, so it really helps block it from the street level.
And, you know, the street, and then just a survey of some adjacent parcels, all of which I think you're familiar with, of course, the existing, the context that we're in. There's a whole, as you know, there's a whole range of kind of architectural vocabularies. And here we go, brick, brick, precast. And that's, that's a Reader's Digest description of our building.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions or comments?
Welcome to Burlington.
Again.
Uh-huh.
Again.
Yeah, no, well, the use is going to intensify. I worked for a pharmaceutical company for 35 years, and so I spent a lot of time in Cambridge with those research people down there. And to see that Broad Institute that they've, they're, it's relatively new, I think, where they're all getting together, to see them say that that's going to be located in Burlington, they're probably going to build in Burlington, and so that's going to bring so much to us because, like every pilot, we have students and so forth, and there are opportunities for them to interact sometimes and a lot of good jobs, and you don't get the intensity of traffic with lots and lots of people going into a building because there's a lot of research place, space. So it tends not to overwhelm a site with traffic and so forth, but just everything about it. And when, there was a nice article in the newspaper, which I'm sure you folks contributed to, and when I read that, I just said, every town and city outside of Boston would be looking for a place like this. And for you to come to Burlington, I think is a really, quotes, capture for us too. So we want you to know where you're welcome here, and you and others that you will bring. And as you know, we're very cooperative people coming in, and so, welcome. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone else? Please?
Hello.
Hi, I'm also welcoming. I don't expect any answers on this tonight, but I'd like to explore a little bit that screening that you have for the, for the mechanicals on the roof. I like the idea that it's not solid. I'd like us to think a little bit more about what else maybe could be done with it. I actually had the privilege of attending a meeting yesterday with the Conservation Commission, and there was a gentleman presenting, and he talked a little bit about green walls. And this seems like something that could be achieved there, perhaps not on all four sides because you need to be able to have signage, but it can come down from the top. And there was a list of benefits, not just visual benefits, but also just a lot of other benefits to the building and to the environment, and I, it seems like this might be something where that would work, and I'd like you to just think about that. And I just wanted to ask one other question. Am I correct in understanding that you will not be removing any of the trees or vegetation outside the footprint of that current parking lot?
That's our intention, yeah.
Okay, thank you. One last thing. You are seeking special permits, and as my fellow board member has pointed out to us rightfully, we are hesitant to give special permits for certain things when we don't know who the user is. And I know that's impossible for you right now, but it's just something that we're going to have to think about whether or not we want to do that or if we want to approve some of them and hold others until you actually know who the user is. So it's something that we'll be thinking about. Thank you.
Thank you.
Maybe that, that might be something you might want to consider is which special permits you absolutely need to attract the people you're looking for and which you can maybe hold off on if they're, if in fact that is possible. I don't know.
To.
Chair, may I?
If you would, please.
Those are all good points, and that's why I want to do this tonight, so we could, you know, these are conceptual, and you could see from the architectural discussion that a lot of thought went into the context of the surrounding areas to try to incorporate some of the architectural design in there. But I want to point out from the Marriott standpoint, very little's changing on the Marriott, but to the naked eye, looking at the project, I think whoever used the word campus is correct. It's going to look like a campus. There will be reciprocal agreements for parking, site maintenance in terms of the access, et cetera. When you drive by Mall Road, the entrance is going to stay the same. It may be improved with vegetation, but it's going to be the welcoming area. And that, those are some of the things we're working out with staff so that everyone's assured that that will work. I'm not worried about it from a traffic standpoint because today you're parking far more cars on that site than will ever be associated with this building, and there's no traffic issue. And we just have to demonstrate that the shared spaces work for the hotel, and the hotel's very confident that they do. That's why they're very desirous of seeing this happen. But those are good comments in terms of street presentation. This has the possibility or the likelihood of being an iconic building when you come down 128, when you come off the exit ramp. So, you know, your comments will be well taken, and we're not changing the vegetation except pruning it where some trees are dead. I think that's further up, though. But I just wanted to make sure that everyone understood that the reason the Marriott is seeking special permits, because you'll have to grant those to extend the existing nonconformities. And we know that you're under, you know, this is a lot to digest. We wanted to put it out there, but if you have any comments that you think of, you have to staff, and we'll look at them, and we have had some discussions with staff about their focus on how's this going to work together. Thank you.
Question? Good, sorry.
This was not related to what you were just saying, just another question that occurred to me. I appreciate that you're creating the walkway out to Mall Road. I don't know how many of the people who work in this building will be taking public transportation, but there's a bus stop right there on Cambridge Street. I don't know if it would be possible to create just a walking path down. It would probably need stairs because of the slope. I don't know if that's something that would be a benefit to the people who work there, but it's just something you might want to think about.
We are making connection, and there's stairs going down, but well, it's a switchback, I believe.
Yeah.
Well, you're right next to me. I'm looking for you on the audience.
Trying to zoom in if I can. So, again, this is the lab.
So it's ADA compliant.
And we're adding a switchback ramp here that gets down to the sidewalk. Yes.
To Mall Road, right. What I was asking is, is there any possibility or is there even the desire to create a walkway to Cambridge Street because that's where the bus stop is?
The frontage here, I believe there's no sidewalk. The bus stop, I think, is on the opposite side of Burlington Mall Road.
Is it?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. I thought there was one on Cambridge Street. There is one on Cambridge Street, but I think it's further. I think it's further down past.
But we'll look at it.
This is the one we were.
I believe.
To the top of the page.
Because I thought of that, too.
They were just there.
Wrong spot. I think it's further down. You have to, you would have to cross the highway. Right. If there's no sidewalk there, there's no reason to put a walkway to it.
One of the things we've been talking with staff about is the light sequencing and getting people over there, so.
Okay, thank you.
Right.
Member Carina?
Yes, one, another question just popped into my mind is, I believe that the lot is currently used for satellite parking for another entity is, that will go away? Is that correct? Okay. Do you, do you know whether those cars will end up? Any idea?
I have no idea.
Thank you.
But, you know, they've been fully aware of this on an ongoing basis, so.
Is that, is that like, Bernie?
Yeah, I think it used to be anyways. I'm not sure. They kind of move around.
Yeah, they do.
Well, which I think attests to the fact that that lot has, I mean, in all the years I've been here, and it's been a few, I think I've only been in that lot twice, so.
Yeah, right.
That's, and so you're taking a vacant parcel and making it productive with a world-class team and excluding the present company. And I do think it'll be a signature building when you come down.
Thank you.
So, enough.
Great.
Just one minute. I actually love the idea of the green roof, so if that's something you guys could maybe.
We'll look at the, how the panels are treated, and we'll give that some thought.
Because some shrubbery around it.
Last time you did a show, we got the Joe, the Joe wall, right?
The wall. You could do something like that. Green, in green, in the green roof.
Every time I drive by it.
Right, well, the roof, if they have the mechanicals on the roof, they might not be able to, but what this gentleman was telling us is that it can actually be vertical on those walls.
Well, if they have, so I guess the mechanicals are behind the walls.
Behind the walls, and if.
You could do green in front of the walls.
In front of them and up the walls. Picture like Ivy climbing up or falling down.
Yeah.
Kind of cool.
Real cool.
We'll look at some others.
Mr. Crawling. Okay, anyone else? Again, I'm just going to emphasize that word subtle, so I'd like to see what that signage is, would be, and, you know, kind of what your thought is for both, for all users of that building. May I have a motion, please?
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to continue these matters to the planning board meeting of June 16th, 2022.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Opposed?
Thank you for your time.
Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Big flowers against the.
It's going to be 90 feet.
I'm glad you enjoyed this thing.
I said it's 90 feet in here, that's.
Oh, I don't know.
It can be, can it be as high as 90? Is that correct?
Yeah, innovation.
Yeah.
Okay.
Does that only count for underbuilt apartment?
There's a restriction right at the intersection of Cambridge Street and Burlington Mall Road.
Have a good evening.
Thank you.
There's a, say that again, sorry.
But yes, I think so.
I knew how to clear a room.
I know.
Is it something we said?
Yeah, I know. What are we doing? All right, well, we don't have any minutes.
I think it's something the Celtics did.
No, but we will, did receive some minutes. I didn't process them live.
That's okay.
Amazing, so thank you.
Thank you.
Well, we look forward to reviewing those. So we have just some discussion items. I did see an email come through for 24 Terry Ave. Is this the memo that you're referring to?
Yes, we just got it. So, anyway, just getting it. I will just highlight a few things in it, which I think are to note, in terms of, because we asked, how has your business changed? What's different? Is it just? And it actually has changed quite a bit through COVID, and we emailed you out this letter. I don't expect you to have read it by this point, but since COVID, they've been doing a lot more remote servicing through Zoom and Teams and other things, kind of working through problems instead of being onsite as much. So where people were kind of coming from their house, house going out in the field, they're all coming into Burlington. They're doing a lot more remote problem solving. They've also grown their employee base, but of, I think, more major note, they've closed their Boston office, their New Hampshire office, and their Plymouth office. Headquartered here in Burlington. So, anyway, the site, we're still digesting the information, but the site is underparked. They had the reserve just to try to meet it, you know, with. They had the reserve just to try to meet it. You know, with, with that kind of information, I think, anyway, we should just be thinking about it and trying to understand the business, business, how to keep it successful, but how to make sure we're doing it in a way to be sensitive to the neighborhood. So I guess what I asked, I sent out the, sent out the email to, to all of you. If you have comment, please call me. I'd like to reach back out with the applicant. I suggested in this, if there's, if you'd like to meet onsite to kind of talk about it, we can set something up next week with the applicant and invite any members who might want to attend that, to see kind of what they're thinking about. And then if there's need for further discussion, we can ask the applicant to come back. But I wish this was explained in the first letter, because I do think there are important points to consider in terms of their business. But we have it now, and I just would ask you to take a look at it.
Okay.
And Paul, we have a hard copy that we could.
Can you send out a doodle poll for a site visit, preferably in the later part of next week? Thursday, Friday, maybe? Assistant planner candidates?
So we had, Liz, how many did we have total?
Oh, God, at least twenty-five.
Really?
That's good.
You got, you got it. There was a good poll.
That's good.
That's great.
Yeah, it was good. And probably two-thirds were good. I mean, you know, you always get a few, like, plannings out of school, like. But anyway, we have chosen six to move forward with interviews next week. With the assistant planner, it's, we've in the past done that, the senior planner and myself will do the first round, and then we'll bring back two of the candidates, and then open it up to the board for the second round of interviews. If anyone's dying to be part of the interview process, we can certainly accommodate you next week. But that's usually kind of, you know, just vetting out the candidates. Yeah, I think we have some really good options.
Did you guys email me those resumes? If you didn't, would you, of the six?
I, I emailed you the link to all the resumes.
Oh, got it. Okay, so can you highlight who the six are from that?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes, I can. Yeah, and just of those, we have been keeping an eye on the development coordinator position, which isn't in our budget until July first, but July first is pretty close. And kind of looking at these candidates, if anyone is a potential match there, and we will be posting that position officially, hopefully over the next week and a half.
So, can you explain the say, so if we don't have a salary in place until July first, can we hire somebody and then they start July second? Is that?
Could.
Yeah, theoretically.
Oh, yeah, yeah, of course.
Theoretically.
Okay, so, in the, you said that the, of the candidates, you were keeping your eye out for this position as well. Is that included in one of the six, or is that potentially the others?
I think there's, from my perspective, there's at least one candidate that we have that's a strong contender for the coordinated position.
Are they similar salaries?
I'd say that is.
Similar salaries?
Yeah, one, one is grade ten, one's grade eleven.
Got it.
Question?
Sure.
On, on the development coordinator, is, is there a firm job description yet, or is that still kind of?
Yes.
Is it?
Yes, I, I, I am firming it up to say, for posting.
Won't you do that? I would appreciate.
Yeah, if you could show that with the board, that would be great.
And that's the grade eleven?
Yes.
So that, that's higher than the.
The senior planner is grade, I'm sorry.
Assistant planners.
Grade ten. Great.
So what are the ranges on those?
Don't worry.
We want to say that on record, do we? Like, I guess it's.
They're available on our, they're avail, so if you go to.
I'll email them too.
I'll email them too, but they're available on our website. If you go to Human Resources and Salary Tables, it's all, everything we do here is public.
Sure.
So.
Why don't you, if you could email, that'd be.
Yeah, yeah, sure, absolutely, yeah.
I just don't want to misquote.
So, can I ask?
Sure, of course.
And it was this, that, you know, my kids and I don't work now, but it seems everybody's working from home. A lot of them are.
Yep.
And, and not going in at all.
There's a lot of companies that are pushing to go back.
So what I'm wondering, we have certain requirements as far as parking, and those are based on what used to be. And so maybe we ought to, at some point, I get a consultant or something and see if we should change that, because it's no use having somebody building a big building and putting a parking lot that was based when my hair was brown.
Yes.
You know, to, to upgrade that, and, and, you know, would be a much more efficient use, if you will, of the land, if we had trees and grass and something else there, if we didn't need all that parking space.
Sure.
Because there weren't nearly as many people. The ratio had changed.
Yeah. I think it's, I know, I, I agree with that. It's definitely something to take a look at. We can add it to the agenda for the retreat.
Yes.
Quick, quick, quick question or clarification maybe on that? I think unlike other cities and towns around us, we have maximum parking rather than minimum parking, don't we?
They're just, they're, they're, they're a range, and there are min-max. There's, there's not, it's not a minimum. It's a, you know, office can be two-point-five to three.
Right. I, I know in some other towns, their, their building size is actually limited by the amount of parking, which is obviously here, too, but.
Right.
And, and I remember when Terry was, Terry Zold was the planning director, and it was.
Well, parking minimums are a disaster, because then people come in and say, I want all these.
Right, so we.
We actually have caps on if they want to build more than ten percent, then they have to get a special permit, so.
So we have maximum rather than minimum.
I absolutely agree. It's a good idea. For life science, we were very intentional to look at what actually was, it's a lot lower parking for the, for lobby uses and offices. But anyway, I think we're all, as planners, just kind of seeing how things kind of settle out a little bit over the next year, to see what that demand looks like, and not build like Oracle for the last two weeks of order to everyone comes to work. But, you know, we also are very much transitioning into uses within buildings that people come to work, so they need to be here and occupy buildings. So there is a balance to achieve. But yeah, if we don't have to build pavement, we're not, none of us want to build pavement, so.
One quick question, relative to all the business. It indicates on here that they've secured their contractor to deal with not only the sidewalks, lights, and the trees, but the reserved parking as well. What's the status on that piece of the?
We just got this letter this afternoon, so we will follow up. And that's why I was saying, if you, if we want to meet onsite next week, I wanted to speak with the, with Ms. Geary to try to set up some, sometime early next week to figure that out. It wasn't what actually is the plan.
As I've been keeping an eye over there to see what spots are used and what's filled over there, and have some comments that.
How many parking spaces are in reserve?
Only three.
There's only tiny spaces in reserve.
It's not that big, three spaces.
Okay.
Eddie, I didn't want to take the, when the chairman started talking about a retreat.
Yes, back to the retreat. So I was thinking, is anyone going on vacation?
I am.
When are you going on vacation?
But I think I just, I, I think the meeting is the night before I leave.
No, 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 I was talking about the retreat. I was talking, we're going to do a retreat, so just scheduling for.
Oh.
Yep.
The retreat's in Aruba anyways, isn't it?
Yeah, I think we have the budget for that this year. Town meeting, town meeting was good to us.
I'm headed to Italy, so.
Oh, I'll go with you.
Tuscany sounds like a good one.
Absolutely. Okay, so, I mean, can we, can we shoot for maybe the second of the last, I'm going to send out a doodle poll for like the second week in the, second to last week, in the last week in June? Would you guys want to push it?
Are we doing an evening? Are we doing a Saturday? That, because that.
I think probably, I don't know. I, I would like to do an evening or.
Okay, I'm just asking, because I don't have vacation plans. I'm not allowed to vacation because I have an elderly dog. But I might be going away sometimes on the weekend and forcing my child to watch the dog.
There. Okay.
But I leave June seventeenth. I'm not back till July second.
Seventeenth, okay, so either, we'll see what day that is, and then, use your best judgment, we'll figure it out.
I think based on the schedule, you're probably going to be looking in.
Second and third week of July.
You're going to be looking into July, based on.
When we used to do it on the board of select, we'd kind of wait. I mean, it's completely a prerogative, but we would wait after Labor Day, because it tended to be when people were all done with vacations and people were more available for the whole board to coordinate. But subsequently, it doesn't.
I, I don't have a problem with that.
Weekends were away a lot, but.
Yeah, I don't want to do a weekend. I'd rather do a night.
Yeah.
I'd rather do a night, you know, midweek, something.
Do you want a, a poll?
I think so.
Why don't you poll for a second, second to third week in July, and then a couple days after Labor Day and see where everybody lies?
I think we're going to poll first on times of days.
Oh, I think we're, is everybody okay with night, or would you rather?
I'm fine with nights.
I'm fine.
Yeah.
I think if you guys wanted.
We can't really do it during the day. We have people who have jobs.
Yes, yeah, I think that a night would be preferred, so like midweek.
Sure.
Locally, you're assuming, in town hall or someplace else?
Yeah, we could take you to Spa.
Spa.
We could do town hall.
If it's nicer, we could do it outside. Well, we, it's better to have a whiteboard, so we could do town hall. Grandview.
We tried to do the picnic table between the fire station last year, and then we had to haul everything back.
Because it rained.
Yeah, because this has, this has to be.
It has to be in a publicly accessible location.
Yeah, the upstairs at Grandview, the meeting room, I think, that's, meeting room upstairs at Grandview, what do you think it is then?
Yeah.
It's like access to a kitchen. We could get dinner. We could like, you know.
It depends on the custodial stuff.
Right.
If they have someone that they can.
If that doesn't work, it's, it could, we could, like, maybe get a room in one of the hotels, like the, or the.
Yeah, we used to, we'd do it sometimes at Marriott or Charles.
Or the, the new one, the Archer Hotel.
The Archer Hotel.
I actually, I spoke with the owner of Karma the other day regarding the Fourth July celebration, and he had kindly offered their facility to do, you know, to conduct meetings as well. So that could be an option.
Which places?
Karma, Burlington Mall, that's the Asian restaurant.
Near Frank Pepe's. Right to the left of Pepe's?
Yep.
Oh, we have all those reserved parking spaces we could.
Yeah, I was going to say, we could. This is true. Okay, guys.
Before we.
Sorry.
I just had a question for staff. I may have been mistaken. I thought that we could not reorganize unless we had everybody here.
So in, according to the, the procedural rules of the planning board, it is the meeting after the town election when all planning board members are present.
Right, so we can't do it.
So we'll, we'll hold off.
Okay.
I mean, if you, if you really have an overriding urge to do it, we could take a vote to set aside the rules of procedures for a while, but.
A little dangerously, I don't know.
I don't, it doesn't matter to me, whatever you prefer, not on the chair.
I, I think we should wait, but if we want to set aside some time, if everybody wants to do that, I mean, I think we're fine waiting.
Let me ask you, if we, definitely if we are waiting, to look at the committee appointments and just make some, just in your mind, think about if you love where you are sitting and want to change, Tony Anne, what you might be interested in.
I want to stay on sculpture park committee, but I'm perfectly willing to give up my spot on housing partnership.
Yeah, how's that going?
Their meeting times are really inconvenient for me.
Six o'clock or something.
Five or six o'clock in the evening all the time.
If, if you're leaving my bench, I'll go back on the committee.
Oh, I'm not giving up my spot on sculpture park, but I'll get you a bench. I'm already working on that. We're going to get a bench. But, but you'd have, you have to pry my sculpture park committee assignment out of my cold, dead hands.
So maybe. I would like to stay on economic development. I enjoy that.
Okay.
Maybe Tony would be interested in the housing.
Right.
That's a, that's a very, that's a kind of an active committee.
Really doing this.
Yeah.
Well, you guys can.
That's the only way, the only reason. I'll do it if you want me to do it, but I'm just saying, they're going to say she doesn't even know this committee. She's.
We all start somewhere.
Yeah, we all have to do some.
Well, I mean, if you want me to do it, I'll do it. I mean, if.
Well, do you want it? I mean, just think about it, yeah.
Yeah, just think about it. You don't have to decide. We're not going to do it now.
You don't need to decide today.
Yeah.
Just think about it before now, next week.
And you can call me and talk to me about it. If you want to call next week.
Yeah, Liz is a good person to tell you about it.
We don't need any special talents to be on any of our committees.
Well, I didn't want to make any comments, so just listen, because I wanted to just fail it. I'll be fine.
I understand.
No?
All right, guys, well, Celtics are playing tonight. We don't have any other agenda items, so may I have a motion?
Just one, one quick thing, in case anybody out there happens to be looking, listening. The MBTA is changing their bus routes. I bowed out last night at the Transportation Committee meeting.
Yep.
And some of them, like the one that used to go directly to government center, it's not going to exist anymore. So, and there is a comment period, and I guess.
You should be on that there. My boyfriend works for the MBTA. He has a lot to say about this.
Do you have Paul, Paul?
They should add him, and where they shouldn't add him.
I'm sorry, Ernie, what was I going to say?
A way to find out how to comment is MBTA.org, I guess, or.
You should work with Tony Anne as the transport, if you just want to stay on transportation.
My boyfriend's a bus driver for the MBTA. He has a lot to say about the bus routes.
Oh, 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 oh.
I think it's a better bus project. I think if you Google that on MBTA, and it's, it's everything you need to know is there, but I can also email you about it.
They did drop some of the stuff, and they did that. I hear about this stuff. Oh, it's a lot to do with this.
All right, guys, we have a motion.
To a judge.
Oops, whoops.
Jen, okay, Jen, sorry.
Go ahead, Jen.
I've also posted it on the transportation.
Facebook page and our webpage.
All right, so I had a motion, I had a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Have a good night, guys. Eight o'clock.